Good evening, everybody. It's August 13th. It's a town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the floor?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking... I'll make a motion for the approval of our prior minutes for the July 16th regular board meeting and the August 1st special town board meeting. May I have a second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I have a couple of announcements. On the 8th of August, we had a monthly, as we do, the first of the month, status meeting with Tyler Technologies on our town-wide revaluation project, which is going very well. They're on schedule. I will have the clerk post this on our website with all the notes. Out of the 6, 500 properties they've done, only 10 people have refused to speak to them so far. So I think it's going very well. Again, I'll get this on the town website. And also, I just want to update everybody that on Tuesday, August 21st, I'll be meeting Bill Hollister, the senior manager for regional government affairs with Amtrak and members of representatives from the New York Department of Transportation and Mayor Bassett to look at the specific sites where Amtrak is proposing fences. Also in attendance will be Barry Sherrod, our highway superintendent, and Frank Intervalo, our emergency services coordinator. And the mayor will have another trustee and his manager for the water plant present at the fence-proposed site near the water plant. And then we will go on and look at the other sites. And then Bill and I will continue to meet with someone from the real estate department, Amtrak Real Estate Department, who's coming up from Philly. And we'll do a walk-through again for the federal ADA changes and adoptions needed and the New York State repairs. What is it called?
I can't remember.
Something of good... State of Good Repairs, repairs. So Brennan was with me the last time. I don't think she's going to be able to make it this time. If anyone would like to join me from the board, I'd love to have another representative so you guys can think about it and talk it. There's plenty of time. But again, I want to thank Amtrak and especially Bill Hollister because he's a terrific representative for his company. He's very easy to work with, and he has been very helpful. After this onsite meeting, where we'll have renderings and plans and get a really good idea of what they want to do, the New York Department of State will be holding a public hearing, a public meeting here with us so that we can talk to the public about what these plans are. We are both mindful that there's a potential safety issue for Amtrak, and we're also mindful that we don't want to limit access for our residents to the river. So again, who advertises that public meeting? Will they do it? Do we publicize it? We will. We will. They will. I mean, you know, we'll get the press on it. We'll tell Phil Kimball. So that... It's just huge. Bill Hollister is a great working partner for us at Amtrak.
Did you say the date and time of meeting?
It will be at 11:00 a.m. on Tuesday, the 21st. Does anybody else have any other announcements or liaison reports or anything?
Okay. Well, I will remind the public that we still have an opening for a voting administrator. We had somebody who applied but withdrew their application for their own reasons, so we're still searching.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. How about... I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-188 for budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thanks, Brennan. Are there any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-189 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts, vouchers, 865 through 956, 64 checks totaling $170,742.66. May I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-190 for our capital project abstracts, five checks totaling $77,127.44. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion? Any questions?
You said 44 cents. You had 14.
Or 14 cents. Thank you, Chauncey. Any other discussions or questions? The big amount here is $75,000 that we're returning to the Frost Memorial Foundation with gratuity. They funded our cemetery wall, and because we are not able to proceed at this time, we're returning the funds to them. And they have graciously let us know that when we are all locked and loaded and ready to bid it out again and go, that they would be happy to support us. So we were very grateful to the Frost Foundation for their continued support. Is there any other further discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I would like a motion for Resolution 2018-191, appointing... Bear with me. Planning for places, LC, as the town's planner, the planning board's planner for the remainder of 2018 pursuant to the engagement letter and draft contract. Thank you, Brennan. May I have a second? Thank you, Ed. Just... Is there any discussion? Michael, you're here. Would you like to...
Any questions?
No. I know that you did a diligent search, and we're very happy with these folks. And we will miss Bart. We would like to announce when you think you can work with. And we wish you guys all the best and look forward to meeting them.
Do we want to amend it to say "town planning board's planner"? If we're also engaging a planner?
I don't think it matters. No. This is the council planner. We can hire an additional planner and work with the town board if we want to. And we can also continue with Bart on the special projects.
Yes.
I'd appreciate hearing something about that.
Yes.
Part of the process.
What would you...
There is a small firm there, Peniskiuna, it's a two-firm firm. Basically, they do... We have done a lot of projects for different communities. Things for Stillwater, some other community such as Rhinebeck. Melody Moore and I interviewed them. We interviewed a couple other people as well. And they are the people we like the best. Jim Levy, who's one of the principals in the firm, is the one we spoke to. And we then asked him to come down and speak to the whole planning board, which he did at our last meeting. And there was one person who was absent from that meeting, but the rest of us, the other six of us, all voted that we would like to work with these people. Give them a chance. I think it's kind of fortuitous that it's just going to be for five months and give us a chance to see if we work well together if they want to work with us, you know, going on. And I think that they're definitely going to be very, very helpful. They're going to be their one big municipal contract. Most of them are doing projects for towns. So they feel that they will be right on call for us just the way ours is right now. We think that that was the best fit. We're spoiled by ours. We want to keep things spoiler. So we're kind of hoping that this will work out the same way. And I'd like probationary period for both sides to make sure that this works out.
I think we're going to run with my idea.
Thank you. I'd like to suggest something, Elizabeth. The form of contract that accompanies their letter and both of which accompany our resolution is a special project sample. It'll have to be modified quite a lot, but I think in routine ways. I would like... Because of that, I would like to suggest just adding at the end of the resolution, and with such other... And with such modifications thereof, that shall be approved by the supervisor and the town attorney.
That's fine. This does say that it has to be approved by the town attorney.
Yeah, but it refers to that sample. You got some 30 changes.
So let's make a motion to revise the resolution that's on the floor to include...
That in English?
You have to say it again.
Sure. I move that we modify the proposed resolution by adding the following language at the end of the resolution, and with such modifications thereof, that shall be approved by the supervisor and the town attorney.
Should it be the planning board and the town attorney?
If you wish.
That's not necessary. I understand exactly where Chauncey's going. I think he's right. I think it's basically the language about basically being a planner for, a non-call planner for planning, rather than just a specific project which you just get in the specs, they do the project delivery report and whatever, and that's the end of it.
Okay. I would be comfortable to say not the supervisor because I'm one of five, so by the town attorney.
That's fine.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that we're... You know, we'll see what Warren does and we'll heed his advice and, you know, go from there.
Chauncey, would you like to coordinate sending this to Warren?
Hold on. We have an open motion on the floor.
Well, I think the easiest thing to do is just strike the same or substantially the same form. Just say authorize this nine subject to review and approve by the town attorney.
Yeah, but we're going to change it a lot, and I think we should have a signature.
We have a modification for our resolution on the floor. All in favor of the modifications?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Now we have an open resolution on the floor. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. The clerks will get this. Okay. I need a motion for Resolution 2018-192, hiring a temporary assessor's aide. I'll actually make the motion since I'll leave it to the department. May I have a second?
Sorry.
Thank you. What's your name, Alan? Yeah. We... Rochelle has retired, and Donovan is out on family medical leave. So Matt Savia, who's doing a great job running the department, needs a temporary assessor's aide. So we are going to hire Giovanna Sullivan as a temporary aide, $15 an hour through the end of January. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. I would like a motion for Resolution 2018-193, authorizing the highway superintendent to advertise for the 2019 material bids.
So moved.
Thank you, Chauncey.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I would like a motion for Resolution 2018-194 for our recreation program for volleyball.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I would like a motion for Resolution 2018-195 as an amendment to our recreation refund policy for canceled camp days.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thank you, Brennan. Alan, would you explain this to us?
Sure. Up until this moment, the policy on refunds for the day camp has been no refund. Purpose of doing that was to prevent people from signing up for camp and then in the last minute canceling or doing something else. However, we've been applying that policy when we have rain days. So what this does is it basically says that if we cancel camp more than one day in a week because of weather, that prorated refunds would be given. And if we cancel two days that week, they get one day of credit, et cetera.
But it's not a refund.
It's not a refund. It's a credit against if they come back the next week or the next year.
They credit on my rec.
Right.
Okay. Great. I think that's a good idea.
I have one question. I'm all in favor of it. Is that a big book... I mean, is it a big paperwork or bookkeeping burden for us to do this?
It's not as big as issuing checks. That's why we do it this way.
Yeah. No, I think it's a great idea. I just know it's...
This was Shelley and Elaine's suggestion.
Suggestion. That's the way to resolve the concerns.
Yes. Elaine enters everything into my rec and can easily issue a credit on my rec. It's the easiest and most effective way of...
Way of...
Time to do it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any decisions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I need a motion for Resolution 2018-196, for recreation refund requests for Fang and Master Frey Army. Hope I said that correctly. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thank you, Brennan. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2018-197, requesting an extension of the scoping comment period with additional public information and scoping meetings for the New York, New Jersey Harbor and Tributaries Coastal Storm Risk Management Feasibility Study. May I have a second? Thank you, Ed. This is from Riverkeeper. And the Army Corps of Engineers has initiated a coastal storm risk management feasibility study with six proposed plans. Riverkeeper, Cenik Hudson, and a lot of other non-for-profit groups who are advocates for our Hudson are very concerned about some of these plans. I want to make the public aware that there's a scoping session, and this is pretty much on par with the oil tankers on our river. Some of these proposals would be building barriers that would restrict the tidal flow of the river. One of the proposals is building up berms nearer to potential flooding areas in New York City, Manhattan, Queens, Brooklyn, Sandy Hook, New Jersey. So this is a very potentially huge issue facing us. But the good news is that the scoping comment deadline has officially been extended to the 20th of September. So if any of you would like to get more information or speak to anybody about this, we can table this to the first meeting in September. I'm also going to bring it forward to the American Supervisors of Dutchess County. And I'd like a resolution that, you know, sort of formalizes our concern and calls for more scoping and public comment on this, to raise awareness. As, you know, our resolution for the oil tankers really drove in, tens of thousands of responses. So this is another issue facing us. And I'm happy to table it for the next meeting so that anyone here...
I don't see why you shouldn't.
No, I don't think you need to table it.
I was just offering it.
I know.
I was just offering it. I feel strongly about this. Our Hudson Valley Seven, the seven municipalities that have banded together to protect our drinking water, seven municipalities that get drinking water from the Hudson River, I'm sure will support this as will the Dutchess County Supervisor and Mayor Hope. So we are... This resolution requests an extension of the scoping comment period with additional public information and scoping meetings for the New York, New Jersey Tributaries and Coastal Storm Risk Management Feasibility Study. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will ask the clerks to put something a little less dry than this. I'll work with John on it on our website.
Is that okay?
Yes. Dry. Less dry. And so we can try and get more awareness from the public because we need people to pay attention to this. Thank you for that. I have a couple of...
I have one more thing to ask, though. Do we want to do a resolution from the floor to authorize the paving at the pavilion? Or is that being handled some other way?
I don't know that... I think we've dressed this early. I think we can pass something. But if...
They were... Bob was still asking me from the rec committee for the permission.
We did that... If I'm not mistaken, we did that a month or two ago.
Is this the handicaps part?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I thought that was the gravel for the handicaps.
No.
It was the paving. Okay. Then I'm going to tell him he's fine.
John, have we passed that resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, we passed it.
I mean, I...
No, I remembered we done it. And then I thought, oh, well, it must have been the gravel if they're asking. But I did not go back and look. And I should have asked you. Okay. Well, then, I guess we don't have to worry about it. I'll tell him he's to go for it.
Well, I mean, I spoke with Barry, and you saw the email, right?
I actually told Barry that that was passed. It might have passed.
No, it's the rec committee that was... Well, anyway, doesn't matter. I'll reach out to them and straighten it out.
Well, don't forget Alan's the liaison.
Right. Okay. So I'll forward it to you, Alan.
Yeah. The rec committee has...
No, I just assumed since they kept emailing me that they needed something else that we hadn't done yet. So...
I think we're good for that.
Yeah. So they can go ahead. They'll be very happy.
The rain has slowed the highway department down on our repaving. You know, inclement weather. Old Post Road is still there or so. But that really has to get down before... I'm sure they're waiting for that to do the rec park. I know they were out flailing today, so...
The idea was that they would do it as part of the bigger project.
Yeah. Right. I have two resolutions. I guess... Yeah. Two resolutions from the floor. This is Resolution 2018-198, hiring two part-time temporary building department staff for our data entry project. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. This is the grant that we got from the New York State Archive people. And we are going to hire two people at $15 an hour, work up to 20 hours a week for the duration of the project. And it begins this week. And we're very grateful for Paula Tremble. Paula Tremble for overseeing this. And this part of the project will be scanning all of our building department permits from, I don't know, the late '60s to the present, and then checking them against the original and archiving them.
It would be amazing to have this done.
Yes. It'll be huge. It'll be searchable within our municipality. So thank you for the grant, New York State. Thanks for Paula for overseeing this. And we'll be excited to get this done. Can we vote on this?
No.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I have one more resolution from the floor. We left it, so catching up from... As you guys know, we have... Let me get this on the floor first. I'll make a motion for Resolution 2018-199, Memoir of Agreement with Teamsters Local 455 Selecting an Arbitration Town. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. You guys know that we have a union grievance from our highway employee, which was denied. The grievance was denied both from the highway superintendent and myself. And now it's going to go to arbitration. So this is a memo of understanding that allows me to sign the MOA. And the board, the list of arbitrators has already been approved within our current contract with the union. This is, was a negotiated list. So I'm asking you to allow me to sign the memo agreement so that we can go to arbitration.
And they're going to have one of these five?
One of them, our contract states that we have to go with the person who has the first availability. And there is a person with the first availability, although none of us were able to meet with them. So we have to go with the person with the first availability at the first date that all of us can meet. So that's what we're doing.
Got it.
All right.
Are there any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Does anybody else have any new business? Is there any public comment on any non-직업 items? Is there anything?
Joel.
Joel, all right, Joel. Two minutes, town-related business only.
How's everybody doing?
Great.
Lovely weather?
Don't we have a, oh, you don't have a, when is your legislative week? Do you not do...
Wait a minute. It's the second Monday. I'm staying at Kipsey. No, the 15th anniversary of the Dutchess County Legislature is actually happening in Reinbeck, the 20th. It's going to be next Monday, I believe that is. 7 o'clock at the Dutchess County Fairgrounds, Livestock Hill. You're all cordially invited.
Oh, wow.
So I just thought I'd, I wasn't able to, you guys didn't have anything on the fourth Monday last month, right? So I just thought I'd show up today. So I wanted to invite everybody. I know you guys have looked into the community choice segregation issue. There's a guy named Jeffrey Demansky from the Institute for Building Technology and Safety. He's an expert on CCA, working with organizations like Renewable Highlands. And so he and I are doing a forum on CCA, and that's going to be at Clinton Town Hall on Wednesday, September 5th, at 5:00 p.m. So you're all invited to that. Town Board Member Scher. Alan, I wanted to thank you for joining me here. We didn't have a packed house. It was only like five or six of us. But it seemed that Alan seemed to be sort of interested, worked with me to start building interest to look into municipal broadband. There's lots of different ways to do that. And I don't know if you got the emails I sent you, but there's a guy named Christopher Mitchell, who's kind of like the top expert in the country on this. And I've been in touch with him. And for a long time, he's been promising maps of, you know, where the broadband gaps in Dutchess County. And he's done it. And I emailed him to Town Board Member Scher. Turns out that there's 139,000 people in Dutchess County who have no choice. There's only one broadband provider for them. Basically, it's like 46% of the county. And there's some stuff specific for Reinbeck and Red Hook that he's dug up. But if you go to muni networks.org or ilsr.org, you can look at that. So I just thought I'd point out that. I just, for about six or seven years, I've been saying that Dutchess County should not be doing business with big nasty banks. And I claim a little bit of credit for helping to convince the county executive and other folks to divest from Wells Fargo and Bank of America. Yeah, I've been sort of taking the lead on that. Unfortunately, Dutchess County still has $150 million account with J.P. Morgan Chase. And if you know IGNPU or the National Domestic Workers Alliance or actionnetwork.org, the fact is, it's not just Wells Fargo, but J.P. Morgan Chase has a massive contract. They're doing the debt financing for Core, Civic, and Geo Group.
So who should we be banking with?
Not J.P. Morgan Chase. There are other, there are other, there are other banks. It's the, if you go to the Dutchess County Executive's website, then click on executives or orders. It's all, every year, it's always the first executive order that either Steinhaus or Molinarra, whoever's the county executive signs. And on January 2nd this year, and I've tried to get Dutchess County for years to divest from J.P. Morgan Chase for other reasons. But J.P. Morgan Chase is helping to keep these kids and kids.
Well, who should we?
The immigrant kids separated from their parents?
Who should we be banking with?
That's J.P. Morgan Chase. I haven't memorized the whole list, but if you go to that, I'm not going to take the time to go to my little iPhone right now. But there's a whole bunch of other banks that we don't have $150 million accounts with.
On the website?
Yeah, right on, right on the county executive's executive orders. The only other good thing I was going to say is we're doing our 24th or 25th repair cafe. It's happening Saturday, September 15th, right in this room, noon to 4:00 p.m. And last but not least, if you missed it, the 11-year-old was able to have some fun hacking into voting machines and voting machine results recently in, I don't know whether it was Reno or Nevada. And for about almost a decade now, just north of us, in Columbia County, they hand count the votes. And it is possible to do it. They've proven. And Elizabeth, I'm sorry, Virginia, for your, Virginia Martin, who is the Democratic Elections Commissioner for Columbia County, she is asked regularly to speak in Washington DC and all over the country to prove how easy, cheap, and simple an acter it is to hand count votes. I wanted to last but not least, give you credit, Town Supervisor Spinsia, for working with the others on the municipal leadership thing. People need to be aware that with the massive fund balance we have, we need a green infrastructure revolving loan bank to help municipalities invest in green roofs. Because people like me shouldn't have to worry, oh, there's the rain, and there's another half a billion, half a million tons of raw sewage put into our river. And so that, that under leadership of Dan Shackley and yourself and Riverkeeper, it's awesome, but we can't wait. We need, with the massive fund balance that we have, there should be a revolving loan fund for green infrastructure.
Are you talking about the county's massive fund balance, not the town's line, but expensive fund balance?
Right, right. That, that, for three years now, the county's fund balance has tripled what it was for decades. The county should be helping...
What is the fund balance?
$55 million. And Elizabeth, remember, before that, last year was $59 million, before that was $57 million. For decades before that, it was about $20 million. They should be helping you guys and Dan Shackley and all those municipalities pay for the green roofs. There's also, I'll just close with this. University of Toronto, green roofs could capture 70% of that stuff. And Columbia University, seven years ago, 1 billion square feet of green roofs could keep 10 billion gallons of water from the city sewer system. That's in New York City. We shouldn't have to be afraid every time there's a rain, and I go to the river all the time now, that it's going to be a half a million tons of raw human waste and sewage put into the river.
Thank you, Alan.
I just wanted to add, the contract we have with the cable provider in Reinbeck, which is Spectrum now, is written and signed in 1991.
Doesn't it automatically roll over?
It automatically rolls over, but it's way out of date. And it, the only, the town gets royalties for licensing Spectrum for the Time Warner Cable. But the royalties we get are based only on TV service, not on internet service, not on voice over internet, and not on extras like HBO and movie channels and the like. So, you know, our revenue has been going down every year by a substantial amount.
But we've tried renegotiating it with our, with our five municipalities, with Panda, and, you know...
Yeah, I understand. Warren wants to do it, Warren, the town attorney. I, you and I have been talking about doing it. I just want to let you know we're going to try it again.
Could you please call Robert McCann, the supervisor in Red Hook, for, before? Because, you know, we've been needing semi-regularly and much people from Time Warner, Spectrum, from Time Warner. And, you know, we don't have to...
I mean, one of the issues was that it seems like, and I'm not sure if this is true, that where Time Warner, Spectrum is in a competitive situation, in New York State, they charge less than they charge here, where there is no competitive situation.
Yes, yes, that's true. So Panda consists of the town and village of Reinbeck, the town and village of Red Hook, and Tibbly, the village of Tibbly. And together, we try and negotiate, and it's, there's no impetus for Spectrum to have to negotiate with us.
I understand, unless we got a state law or a county law.
Yes, exactly. You know, I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. I'm sorry. The Planning and Zoning Board have requested, and I think it would help us to, that we really look at, we've talked about this in the past, some kind of projector and screen system for, for... So, I mean, I'd like to start looking at that. It can go into our budget this year, if we, if something we can do. The other thing is that I've had a couple of complaints, and I've talked to the chair of the planning board about this, from people who are submitting large amounts of paper for planning and zoning. And I think streamlining what we require is something we should look at. And, you know, maybe we can formally sit down with the chair of the planning board and the chair of the zoning board and make sure that these boards are amenable to us requesting a digital copy and only one paper copy, and making sure that Planning and Zoning Board members either have access to a tablet or something else to reduce paper. And we may have to amend our law for this because it's embedded in our zoning law. But I think we should be moving to paperless or one, one paper application.
Is there a reason for paper at all?
Well, the zoning law, it's sort of like the Spectrum 1991 contract.
I understand.
The zoning law, it's always been displayed. It's just rolled over and no one's ever actually looked at it. At this day and age, I don't see any reason why we just, we need one paper copy, obviously, just in case, so you have it. On occasion, if our engineer, well, let's say we have some failure of our digital...
Yeah, if our server goes down and we can't...
We have, we have, right now, every file that we have is three, there are three copies.
Right.
One in the server, one in the backup disk that's in there, and one off-site. So I don't see any reason for...
But Alan, sometimes we're here and our server goes down and we can't get access to our computers.
It doesn't hurt to have one paper copy. A lot of people want to come in and look at it, especially if it's a large site plan, something like that. On occasion, an engineer may need something. But on the whole, no, one copy should be plenty. Everything else is digital. If people want to come in and see it, we may need to develop some sort of screen or something so we can actually see these things off-digital. Some of the stuff is so detailed, you're not going to see it on a computer screen.
Are we talking then about changing the paper copies distributed to board members? Would that be, that as well? Yeah, that's the big, because, you know, right now, like, planning is like 12 copies if you split it.
And the other thing is, when we have to refer things, county planning, I think will take digitally now, Shippel takes it digitally now. There certainly we have to refer to different groups, different organizations.
And there are, there are printing, local printing companies, both family-owned and big chains across the river that will turn files into a digital file. We could be archiving digitally.
No, it's also very expensive for an average applicant, not, you know, a big...
It's a waste of paper, too.
Apricant, I know, but they, but I mean, it costs a lot to, it can cost over $100 to make a submit, just in the cop, in the printing of it.
And they're heavy, and there's also a safety issue. One of those things slid on the piano head the other day. Not that I'm complaining, but, you know...
Watch out for the boxes down there.
Yeah, I know. I know, you'd be grateful to do that.
Since you're the liaison, is this something you could talk to Scott and Michael and...
I just said, Michael and Scott.
Yeah, think about it in terms of, so there's some sort of projector, some sort of screen, because they can actually inject these things.
So we'll, we'll talk in the...
I think we're in favor of that.
I think it's a great idea. We're all in well.
And I think if a board member needed something printed out, then we could help facilitate it or the applicant. Whatever, they don't want to...
Well, have a paper copy downstairs.
And this came from Gretchen and Chris as well.
And Chris.
And I've gotten...
No, and for my time as a clerk down there, it's a lot of paper.
I had a person this week corner me and tell me how many, how many memes of paper he had to submit. So, and it's not the first time, so I think it'd be great if we reached on it.
I think I'm terrific.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael. Last thing is that planning and zoning clerks, they're, they're approved to work up to 25 hours a week now. They may need additional time to do some clean out of records management. I'd like to put a resolution on the next town board meeting, if everyone's okay with it. They are sort of exempt because they serve at the pleasure of the planning board or the zoning board. So if they're going to do records clean out, they would just, we would need to approve over time. So I'll put that on the next meeting. And, and that's all I have here. Anybody else? All in favor of a adjournment? Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night, see you next week.
John, did you get the language for the...
I'll just find the silly email that I know of.
You almost did.
Have a, it's fine. Maybe it didn't even exist.
Oh, you're talking about...
Yes, I'm wondering if I just abandoned it because I can't find it.
Well, you know, you're asking...